Hello, this is Thursday, November twentieth at ten thirty AM. And I hear I called the regular meeting of the fire protection committee to order. There's a quorum of four here. One member is absent because of illness, this David Pearson. And I do have a chair report actually a couple of items of importance and some of you may have heard from somebody. Mr. Pearson is resigning from committee actually effective. What's effective tomorrow? He is moving, some of you know, Colorado. Early next year and to be closer to family. Today he's out because it's still difficult. But I wanted to make the announcement technically, I just noticed this resignation is effective tomorrow. He may be listening via Zoom, but I guess he is technically can't really participate as a private citizen. But I wanted to, you know, make sure that he has anything to tell us about the business item that he was going to report on. That that Mr. McLeary can't tell us, we might ask him a question or two. But he's technically still on the committee until tomorrow. Anyway, I mean, I you all know probably how much he has done. For a lot of things here, I mean, he was serving on the, sort of, of course, on the board of the CCSD for several years. He's been particularly important in Cambria, an essential person in Cambria in fire prevention. But with his experience for the last, I don't know how many years, eight or nine years now as coordinator of the Fire State Focus Group. So, and of course, he's been very active in, you know, beach and coast and many other things. He's a very good, very strong leader. Very valuable person in Cambria is going to be sad to see him go. He leaves a obviously a vacancy on this committee and I we're already advertising the vacancies. So we'll see who, you know, wants to sign up and hopefully they'll get some applications. If anybody who's who's already submitted an application for this committee will will be automatically considered. And Tony and Mr. Luca, your wife has an application.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't know, we talked about that before. If you're on the committee, you weren't assuming that she be.
No.
Yes.
No, it's going to be one or the other.
Yeah.
And so she she decided it's not.
Yeah, okay, so we have we have one act, we have one application that's on file. But there'll be a period, if you know anybody who's interested in or in applying, let them know. There's a there's a vacancy now as of tomorrow, basically. Yes.
Previous committee meetings, if one is sick and still available at home with the permission and he has no other conflicts at home, he's able to go by Zooms.
Let's see if he's even here. He's not online, no, he was.
That's fine.
He's probably under the weather, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it gives a bit of about.
Yeah.
Available.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's what I have. There's also a announcement about. The item four C, I guess, is going to be the chief's. Presentation and Gavin Brooks, I think, is going to be taking taking the reins on that.
Yeah.
That's good. So that's we had that covered. And then on the item four B, which David was going to do. He, I think, Mr. McLeary, you know something about that? Sensor of the fire sensors others that there this that wants our wants to buy from them. I know a little bit about it. A little bit about it. There was and chief, you guys may know about it. There was a. If it is, it is the N five sensors. There's another one too, is I guess it's working with Moro Bay, another company doing that remote sensor system. We may be able to. You know, get some input from you and from Gavin Brooks.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's it's we've been looking at it from a staff level perspective and it's it's expensive. It's expensive at the moment and after our recent budget adjustment to the general funds, another budget adjustment coming in December. Staff perspective, we're a little agent about, you know, I get that spending that time for money. But we could start looking at grants and things like that, you know. I think ideally it's it is excellent technology, just have to find a different funding mechanism.
There was talk from David about presenting it to a local citizen who seemed to be willing to only up for some or all of it. I don't know about the status of that from David. That's been discussed extensively at the Fire Safety Focus Group.
Yeah, I think David was going to present also to the board, wasn't he? You know anything about that, Haley?
I don't believe it was on an upcoming.
The agenda, yeah. They're talking about that.
And we definitely could. I mean, we could put it on a future agenda if we start looking at some of the if there's some of the funded.
Yeah, I think David can will have to inform us on that. And then the question I always had in these meetings is. Where does the fire department line up on it? Is it in Georgia? Never heard that definitively, and that is crucial to any position I would take.
Yeah, because we did get feedback and an email read that between you and Jerry Maine, I think, was bringing it up. And David was too, Greg Alex, Cal Fire Way then. Some negatively about it. They weren't crazy about the idea, I remember. That's the Cal Fire side. They didn't think it's just too.
Any pages implemented?
There's this story in New Times that was and that was linked, you guys simply, I looked at the story, they're doing it kind of as a pilot, I think.
With the same technology?
Similar technology, remote sensing, yeah.
A different company.
Different company. Yes, that one, yeah.
Well, it's trapped, but they're doing.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get to that. I mean, as we get to the item, there may be some more discussion of that. But I did want to, I'll move on actually ad hoc subcommittee reports. I do have questions for staff. About my money question about the grant and that I just read the, I'm going to that, but after I had to make a report. I don't think our ad hoc subcommittee reports are, we're not expecting any evacuation or. Any other ones, I think we're we're just clear on that. So I'll go to I'll go to committee member staff communications first of all. Any committee member communications, things that are relevant going on, questions you have.
I just had one question on the last. The last meeting, we presented that little thing on the. The whole fire.
The wildfire.
Wildfire. I just, my last question was, where do we, where do we go?
Good. That's a good question. We discussed that in good general review a little bit.
Yeah.
We, because we we were able to apply for that fire safety community status without having this work completed. They're not, it's not the same sense of urgency getting it done. We do want to come back. I think we're talking about maybe January, having something that to to present.
Oh, okay.
And and we can get your ad hoc, the ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Re-engaged.
With Putney and all them. Or this toward or not?
I guess, yeah, I guess plenty of you, yeah.
I think he had to be pardoned.
Right, right. But we could have that, we could, I think we're targeting this to be the January meeting of this committee. Which would be the third Thursday in January is as target date for that at this point.
I'd, yeah, Gordon. This is our general questions of fire organizations, that's three comments, one. What, at one time we had some research doing permission for excess evacuation out of Cambria. And there was seven owners or something involved.
Oh.
Was involved.
That's that's the evacuation routes along off of RDAF and Marlboro, yeah.
And so the question is, is anyone still pursuing that? And if not, you know, it's called it, he's the last status. Still no one was doing it.
I can I can answer that question. I think Mr. McLeary can too. Yeah, there's the. There's been talk, there's been, there's a move, there's a initiative, I guess, underway at staff, we're looking at the staff level. Because it's a very good question, it's very relevant. There are seven property owners. And the bearing degrees of response we got from them when we asked them initially, we're going to ask them just for some. Mo you or a voluntary arrangement, we got we got basically rebuffed by most of them on that. They didn't want to deal with, they didn't want to talk to us about that. The new idea that we're pursuing and against staff level, we're not, it's not back to the board yet, but the board hasn't has directed staff to do this. Is to seek a easement, emergency access easement on the properties. Either through, you know, ideally voluntarily, but not, you know, it's possibility of eminent domain. And an emergency access easement as opposed to some, as opposed to say, a public easement or whatever. Or just an easement for a road is very, very, very limited. It would be, the road would be improved and be maintained, I suppose, by by us, but who knows? But the the key thing is that the road would be limited in its use to evacuations. And which are ordered, which are which are ordered by, you know, the authority. I mean, it's not like people just want to leave, get out. And do it. It'd be limited evacuation, so it'd be used very rarely, if at all, it would be probably open like once a year for or maintenance is needed. Which again, wouldn't be very frequent, maybe after the rainy season. It could possibly be open for an annual drill or something like that too, but it would be extremely limited and it would be not be open to the public for recreational use, which is. Fear a lot of it, especially the Rancho Moreno owner has. So we're working on whether we, what our authority is and what the cost might be, what the, you know, the risks might be. And, you know, whether it would fly. Right now, I think as of November, this board staff to work on it and the staff is going to come back in January. I know Mr. McLeary has a progress report or anything like that.
No, I think I think what you've highlighted is exactly where we are district wise. We kind of engage those communications with those landowners and then the next piece of it is is where our jurisdiction is on that property. Have some conversations with county and have their input in on it and then ultimately bring forward potential options. The board of the direction, I think, moving forward. If we're talking about eminent domain or condemnation, those are several properties, it's very expensive. So obviously the district. That's not a deal, we would rather not do that. We'd like to somehow be able to obtain an easement for emergency access without.
Yeah.
A lengthy legal battle, you know, and and that would be costly.
Yeah. I don't believe we floated this idea with any of the landowners. There's one, there's also one property for sale, which makes it kind of complicated. Because he's the owner of that property is one of the least, didn't refuse to even, you know, respond to our letters and so forth. So that, you know, that I don't know what that means exactly, but he's leaving. I mean, of course, when they put it. These properties go on sale sometimes, they go and they go at a very high price and they stay out there for years. So. But it's a property, it's kind of crucial because it's the one between the the end of the improved road, which goes up to the, there's three houses. On the water, on the coast, rather, that the that the improved road that comes out on Highway one goes goes as far as, in other words, it goes about halfway up. Then there's the the road, the dirt road, basically across Rancho Moreno, then the Decker property. And there's this third property, which has a road which is drivable, apparently. I've seen pictures of it, but it's it's the road we'd have to improve. And that's the owner who's been totally non-responsive to us, but he's selling, so we don't know what's going to happen there. But that's that's the picture, basically. That's a good question because we're we're actually in the process of.
Can anyone from our group can help out there or just an ad hoc staff?
There's the, right now, I think it's the ad hoc, there's the ad hoc at the board levels, it's just me and Karen Dean. Which is working.
I hadn't heard any reports.
Yeah, we haven't reported in a long time because I haven't, there will be something in there. Any other questions?
Well, it, I appreciate your work on it. It goes way back to, you know, my first arrival in Cambria and appreciate your stuff here, the pet exam on it.
And kind of, I've been working on it for, with that ad hoc committee with Karen, it goes back, Karen Dean goes back four or five years. Because I remember taking a taking a drive there early during the COVID era with inside out. You know, and John and John Decker the same way, back in early nineteen twenty twenty one. It's just been five years since I went out there, but and then. Still, 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 I mean, it's still a plan. I mean, every day, every time I drive by, I have a one hundred one going south. It's this beautiful road coming out there, but at the, you know, the, at the, the Harmony Ranch, it's called Harmony Ranch Road. It's that it's a big ranch and then there's homes on the coast is that and they they keep it improved. It's actually a lot of it, some of it's paved. But then it ends, there's a stretch of dirt road, which, oh, the other thing you might want to, I might want to remind people of. It was about two years ago, the board commissioned our, you know, our engineer, basically Monte Soto. He's, you know, contracted, he contracted him to do an analysis of the, what it would cost to improve the road across the first two lots, which is most of the section needs to be improved. And we came back back with a report. He had, he also toured the property and I think it was going to be about two million. And but there, but of course, it's, you know, if you bonded wherever, it's not that much, but you turn it into a gravel road. That's, I think, sixteen feet wide. There was some bridges over some of the watercourses, like bridges that use old railcars with four, that kind of thing. It was, it was actually for a road about three miles long that wasn't so bad. And then for the extra stretch, we haven't analyzed yet, which was across that last vacant property. But that's on the record too, and I don't, I think it was something like in April twenty twenty three or something like. Around the time, around the time, I mean, you you came in, I think, that we did that. So that's on, that's that's there too to look at. I could find out where exactly when it is.
That's why I didn't really.
Yeah.
And I had the other point of the fundraiser that they gave at hers property for the fire department, which relate to your area. That funding that was spent on the items, the auction was intended for.
So yes, you're saying Captain McGill is working on that. We have the lockers ordered, the thermal imaging cameras are have been delivered. And then we got a couple other items. So the kitchen is not started yet, but that's in process.
At least in the works.
Yeah, that's something else.
Then the final point, which David Pearson more involved with it was called Landor or Landart System. We were looking at putting in, or telling for what everybody was for. Higher potential in their area.
Yeah. Or no idea, that doesn't.
That's you do, it's landis.
You saw. Latris. It was.
All right, yes.
I don't know. Don't have any updates on that. I don't have any updates on that, it's something that.
There's reason we don't have an update on that. Does that thing or?
No, I don't, I don't have enough to use it.
No, that's just one of the, I have to say we don't have an update, I just want to know who, because Dave Pearson was. In contact, that something.
It might have been, it might have been the Fire Safety Focus Group. The Fire Safety Focus Group project, and it might have been flying, not just, not just a Cambria, but to the whole area. I'm just one, I'm just, I'm just speculating because I don't.
I just thought it was just system, that's all, I didn't want. Fall through the cracks, but maybe it's more in the.
I think it's more Fire Safety Focus Group. We should meet, and they are meeting, Fire Safety Focus Group is meeting next Wednesday. At the Presbyterian Church, or I believe at three, so that can be.
And Dave already pressed for it.
Yeah, Dave was still, Dave was charged there, of course, and have to volunteer.
And a couple of questions.
Yes.
Point is. One is, I know what I wanted to end with, which was congratulating staff on securing that almost million dollar grant for the new fire. It's really great. I imagine it was tremendous amount of work. I think it's spectacular. You got it, you can move forward with it. I wanted to go on record, congratulating.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're really excited about it. Haley and I worked on it. Reached out to Diane Zadi, who's Congressman Panetta's assistant, this project funding came up. Applied for it. It was a super short window, I think, because we were told like it has to be done within like three days, like it populated and they're like, you have three days. And so Haley and I worked pretty hard on that, submitted it in May of twenty five. They told us it was moving forward to DC and as we, as we know, DC has been kind of a mess. With the government shutdown, all of those things, fighting budgets. So we weren't all that confident that it would get pushed through, but then once the government shutdown ended, a day later, we got the email that said. That that bill signed into law and we were allocated nine hundred and thirty five favor. So it's a reimbursement grant, so the budget adjustment we did do for the fire engine will pay for the fire engine upfront. Once we have that payment made, Haley and I will start with immediately working with the USDA, Department of Agriculture, manages this community project funding grant. And we'll start that reimbursement process.
And there, but there is a deficit on the, what you anticipate the final cost to be.
Yeah, the the engine is going to be about one point one, one point one five. So not the best math here, but I think that's eighty nine percent ish, the total cost is going to be covered through the reimbursement process. And as we know, the federal government reimbursement process is low. I mean, I think we're just barely getting back some of the grant funds from the.
You're saying that's about five years, five years.
It's a very. On that, on the shortfall.
Yes, yeah, it came before the board for budget adjustment in November. I want to say it was one point.
Two, I thought it was.
It was an estimate of one point two, but if we did a prepayment, you could get it down.
At one point, there's this over a million and did a.
If you did prepay.
If we did, now we don't, we have we actually paid them, done the prepayment yet?
Not yet. I was, I talked to Pierce, we're going to be doing that prepayment, but the fire captains are working on the final specs of the engine before we actually make that payment. So we're anticipating three weeks to four weeks.
Yeah.
There's been a few meetings.
And I know I've wanted to get evacuation materials for hotels and Airbnbs on the agenda. I think it's a slightly different workflow from the overall evacuation material, so we'll back into that coming to time. I don't need to push, I don't want to push that forward prematurely. At the Fire Safety Focus Group, there was also discussion of using one of the mitigation grants that is being used outside perimeters of the of the town, using that in town. David Pearson's suggestion was that we identify a CCSD owned lot that requires mitigation. And couple that with several surrounding homes that can benefit from that mitigation. Which conceptually makes a lot of sense. It's a, it's a heavy lift in terms of getting homeowner approval for all that, let alone the grant application. But conceptually, I thought it was an interesting idea and I'm wondering how we best can discuss and pursue that.
Yeah, I think we connect offline, we connect offline and then I can work with David. David has a really good grasp of all of the CCSD owned properties. And I would start looking at those properties and where that would fit in terms of other property owners and then. Yeah, go from there, yeah.
Yeah, the concept is that much of our talk about mitigation has to do with it's community focused because one, one house doesn't protect.
Right.
Can jeopardize that. So if you do it as a cluster of homes, it again begins to make better sense.
And where where are those mitigation monies coming from that you said?
Those are Fire Safety Focus Group. Cal Fire. Yeah, Cal Fire grants that are being done, you know, the FICO Dell and.
Oh, I saw this, same program, right?
Yes.
Same program, yeah. So I met with Steve Ockman and RCP, who are the ones that are managing some of that. So I can connect with them and see, because they're going to be taking. So the Fire Safety Focus Group or Fire Safety Council had already given us money to start mitigating our CCSD lots. They actually hired a contractor that that did it this year, and so we'll be targeting next year for the same type of thing. The board will be presented slow resiles, which is that permit, we need elders. I can't remember how many acres, but from Monterey County line all the way down to Moro Bay. And so there's some opportunities there that could be some integration or some access also. Yeah, but I'll definitely connect to it.
So the lots, the actual CCSD owned lots are already kind of covered. You, the the grants we have coming up cover the cost of, you know, the wheat. That's already kind of there. You're talking about something that involves neighboring properties and includes those lots that.
Correct. I didn't know you already had grants covering CCSD properties. I thought it would be an expansion of that, but let's discuss it offline.
Yeah, yeah, because a part of what's happening in those perimeter areas, Cobal Ranch, that's, that's the. That's the Slow Resil Forest Health Grant, the kind of monies that have that have covered that. This Clean Ranch will eventually be a part of that and then the Fire Safety Council got some other monies from the state to just help with our properties. But I'm sure there's, it's possible there.
That was actually, or any more questions from?
Another comment.
Yeah.
There was a. Feature we're working on from going into a ballot about a tax on choice. And one, a couple meetings ago, so it's a lost track of what ever happened to that.
Yeah, I'll, we'll take that up, I think, the staff, staff communications, because there's a couple of things that, you know, there's a touch down here, yeah. Instead, that was, there've been developments in that too. Anyway, so before we go on, I want to make sure we have everybody's attendees, all the attendees accounted for, so that our secretary take them down. Starting with you. Just a, just a name.
Drew.
Drew and then.
Colton.
Colton. Greg Brooks. We have Haley Dodson and Matt McLeary. Well, it's, it's, the microphone will pick it up. Drew and Cole, you know, yeah. Look, you. So to go on to staff communications. I had first of all, a question I wanted to ask Matt about the grant, we just got, I read Kath Tanner's story. Which sort of, I think, explained it that it was going to be covering, as you mentioned that, covering the cost, most of the cost. We've already, you know, allotted to the new new engine.
Better article yet to show, did she do okay?
Yes, she did. She was pretty thorough, yeah, yeah, glad she's still working. But she said that, and she, you know, she talked, yes, she actually footed you and nothing was, there's nothing alarming about it. And so, but I want to make sure, I, I, I hope if, 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 we talked to people about this, it is basically they're all going to go to reimbursing the cost, the outlay. For the the new engine.
Yes.
That's, okay, that's good, that's good to know. And it goes, but it's basically it's simple because it's just we took the money out of reserves, you want to get the money to go back and, right?
Yeah, I mean, in the most simplistic way, yes, the actual. Steps that the federal government wants you to do to get that money back is.
Fast. It's a long process.
A long process.
I remember the Stewart Street Tank, there was process, seems like, seemed like it went through the federal EPA and a lot of things. Like why, but it does. So it's probably a different channel, different bureaucratic path. Or it probably has FEMA in there and all that, so.
And he would, I have all the steps, we've already reached out to the USDA, you know, so Panetta's office. Tells us, congratulations, then they give us the contact at the USDA, they're supposed to reach out to us, start the process, but. You know, we'll be working with Panetta's office to ping the USDA to make sure that they connect with us. We've already sent out two emails to start the process, so. We're already getting on top of it pretty quickly because we know how long this takes to get the monies back. And so since we did do the budget adjustment and we'll be doing prepayment on the engine. We want to really start getting that reimbursement process done. Now with that. We'll have to have delivery of the engine, you know, they'll, they'll have to make sure that it's delivered. We have it in hand, the lead time on an engine right now, three to five years, so. So we'll be without those general fund monies and that reimbursement quite a while. They may have all the steps complete. But the final closeout of it, I imagine, will be an inspection of the brand new engine in the station, fully delivered, outfitted and serviced. Well, we have a ways to go before I see those monies reimbursed, but.
The grant money, so my, my. The grant money, so my, my, uh, the cardinal rule, and I mean, we, we learned from experience, CCSD almost went broke waiting for a grant.
Right.
Uh, it almost ran it, literally ran out of money. So just don't spend it. Don't spend until you have it. There's many years from now maybe, but just pretend it's not there almost. So unfortunately, it's good, it's great that we got it, I'm saying.
Yeah, and, uh, if that article is correct, if you, if you paid on delivery, you're paying. Rather than paying down, you're, you're paying close to two million dollars over time. So.
Uh, no, that, that looks.
It was a couple hundred thousand more expensive, uh, if we. Uh, well. Few different ways. If we finance it, it would have been a couple hundred thousand, maybe three hundred thousand more expensive because you're not financing and you don't get the prepayment discount. Um, if we pay on delivery, that was a little more expensive and then prepayment upfront before they've started building it was the biggest discount.
Is that, that grant money just the, the brand new engine?
It's just for the engine.
Okay, just a suggestion, but at some, sometimes like Pierce will build an engine. And then the people that ordered it full, all down and there's an engine available. Can you still use it for something like that if it met specs that you guys wanted?
Uh, it's a potential, our team is, is designing an engine that is specific to our terrain. And so what's difficult about Cambridge is these hills. Those engines do not like, uh. You know, they're not geared for it. So, and, and Captain Brooks can, can chime in, but they're trying to design an engine that will actually last and, and. Stand up not only in this weather, with these hills, the transmission. I mean, we've had a lot of issues with engines because, um, they weren't geared correctly.
Yeah, the gearing, the engine, the brakes are, yeah, a lot of times were like this with a very.
Right. I, I think I understand. I'm just saying, I mean, like it's, it's, it's a new engine, but it's already built, like somebody inspected out and had it all built. Then the financing felt through or whatever is available.
Yeah. I think.
A little bit.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep an eye out. And I'm sure the, uh, the captains are, are definitely have their eye out for that stuff. Yeah.
So I just, just to clarify from Kathy's story, there was a misprint here, but, uh, I noticed. But she, she notes that the prepayment, um, in order to pay upfront now, uh. Would be a cost of one, one point oh nine five million. Sounds alright. She said it would be two, two hundred nine million. I think the, the missing decimal, I think it's two million. If payment stretches out over seven years, that includes. That might be kind of high, but that would put, seven years is a lot of finance. That's a long financing period, but we're not doing that. So.
That's my, she probably, my, my thought.
Yeah, yeah. She pulled it from the staff report and I think in the staff report, we had several financing terms. That, um, the board had to choose from basically, and that may have been one of those terms that, that had that interest rate.
Now, uh, the other question for you, if you have anything else to give us, obviously not just responses to questions, we should do that, what for you. But, uh. Mr. Heinrich's question about where we are with the, uh, assessment, benefit assessment process. I don't know what you can say about it. There is. Yeah, I feel similar. There's been some, there's been some, uh, consultation with our council.
Yeah, so I've been working with, with Mr. Carmel and we've been doing a lot of research. Um, we did have the presentation by NBS directives, NBS. A fire, a special benefits assessment for the fire department is incredibly hard if not possible. In order. You identify special benefits versus general benefits. So a benefits assessment has to have special benefits to those specific parcels. And for the fire department, it's nearly impossible. To find those special benefits because most of the things that we're looking to do with that benefits assessment is provides general benefits to the entire community. So if we talk about equipment, staffing, um, what were some of the other things that, uh, Chief Burkey, uh, Fire Marshal, right? You know, when we talk about it from that perspective, those are all generalized benefits to the entire community. And so it doesn't meet that special benefit criteria. And despite our previous benefits assessment, you know, the, the Prop two eight law, Prop two eighteen laws and the, uh. The balancing test and the mechanism in which those special benefits can be challenged under Prop two eighteen. Um, have made it really difficult for those to pass. So it's more likely the route that we would look at from a district is to do a parcel tax, uh, instead of. A special benefits assessment. And so we're working with council on the timing of that. Um, there's also on the other side, uh, a potential, uh. Prop two eighteen for the water and wastewater side. So the timing between. Water, water, water and wastewater increases. Fire department, uh, special taxes all within the same amount of time is strategically difficult. Um, so we'll, we're gonna probably look at that parcel tax. Uh, we're also looking at some budgeting, um, tweaks that we'll make over the next year, um, that can maybe help with the fire department funding. Um, there's ranch ad hocks, uh, with this clean ranch on, you know, on maintenance and things like that. So. Um, we've got a little ways to go before we start really looking at the parcel taxes.
Yeah, I, I, my impression was that the, the rules, not so much property, property team was around. When the earlier benefits, but I have, I have a, I get the sense that, that the rules for these things have tightened quite a bit. They have like pretty general benefit tax, um, assessment. You could do that then, but I know there's been some rulings on like, uh, open space and stuff and they kind of clamp down on that. As a benefit assessment subject. So I know that it's just a matter of the law evolves. And both through regulation and court cases. And so it's much more, yeah.
Yeah, if we were to take the standard to which these assessments are measured in today's terms versus the first benefits assessment, that one could have been challenged and potentially, um, overturned. Because it was, uh. Yeah, it just didn't, it, it wouldn't cut.
Wouldn't make the, yeah, wouldn't make the cut.
Yeah, twenty five, twenty six.
Any other staff? Uh, unfortunate communications other than.
Uh, already.
Covered.
Has it, has it been a month? Safe for firefighters. Uh, everybody know that we were able to, the board authorized.
Yeah.
Um, the safe firefighter funding, uh, with the cost share. So, uh, for the next three years, um, once we get the hiring done, which we have. Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days.
To, to hire and then you start and get the firefighters at the end. So we'll have four firefighters on the engine, uh, with full staffing, barring anybody who'd be sick, things like that. Great.
Yeah, and the third year, of course, of that, of that grant is we pay for most of it.
Yeah, sixty five percent.
Have to be ready for the year, if, if you're gonna keep four firefighters, we have to be ready for the time. We have to just pay for them. Cause I have feeling this, this, that's where it's, is where it's headed with the grants and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to get, we don't want to get that top, top too much now, but it's good that we're covered for now. For less, maybe the next couple of years, it's, what, twenty five percent? Co-pay?
Uh, one.
Twenty five? Yeah, yeah. Which is manageable. But yeah, the issues that Mr. McLevy was talking about with, uh, fund and budgeting. Competing budgets and competing item, uh, areas within the general fund are mainly. Um, what facility resources, which is mainly management, you know, ranch maintenance of some, of some kind, either through staffing or through. Outlays and we have a, we do have an ad hoc committee on the board, um, looking into that. And I think we are getting a proposal and develop a proposal that will come to the board. Um, sometime before too long, uh, for a new. Sharing, relative, you know, cost sharing relationship, I guess, all of that. That's in the coming months.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're working on a ranch, uh, management plan update.
Yeah.
The part that you're referring to is, is something we hope to do within that ad hoc. Um, and then there's also the ranch management piece where we, we amend that ranch management plan and, and hopefully somewhere in those amendments, there. There can be that piece where we can talk about, um, some, some maintenance, um, responsibilities that are shared by both parties.
Yeah.
Um, but we've got a little bit of a ways to go on that.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Um, we can farm out our engine now in other places. The four man crew. We just want to hold up.
I go with four man crew, yeah, we, we can. We can do mutual aid, yeah.
Cause you had the fourth person or something.
For the engine, for the.
Full engine, yeah.
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 So that more potential for income sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on then if we're done with money to public comment. Uh. You don't have, I already always want to handy here.
It's just the CCS.
Okay, yeah. So, uh, yeah, is anybody here, um. In the, in the audience or audience of two wants to comment on an item that's not on the agenda? Raise your hand. Uh, anybody online? Is anybody? Okay. There being no public comment, we'll move on to consent agenda. This is a consideration approved as September eighteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes. Uh, anybody have a, um. Change or correction they see necessary? Uh, Ron, your, your last name is spelt D E space Luca. I see it several, I think. I have it correct here, right?
Yeah, it, it, it all depends. For any, anything with the state or the federal government, it's got the space.
Okay.
Otherwise.
We're not, well, we're, we're not that, that level yet, right? We're down at the.
Yeah, no.
Municipal level.
All the way.
Municipal level.
Legally with, you know. Medicare, all that, it's.
Okay.
Got out of the space.
I'll keep it the way it is then. I don't see any change that needed to be, uh, changed.
It's fine.
Anybody else?
To approve by consent or?
Well, we just have a motion.
I approve, I move, move to approve the minutes.
A second, have a second. Okay, it's been moved by, um, uh, in memory. Seppard and seventy five, we remember Luca. At the, um, minutes of the September eighteen, twenty twenty five meeting, the approved. Paul Rowe, uh, Arrol, um. Stafford.
Hi.
Mr. Luca.
Hi.
Mr. Chapman. I, Mr. Heinrichs.
I mean.
I remember the, uh, motion passes four zero, uh, one member absent. Uh, at foray of regular business. Is a, um. It look, I guess we're gonna, it's not a, um, right, it's not, it's not a consideration item. But, uh. It's the, um, it's, it's a tactic, tactic for page six of the agenda back at. Uh, this is new language, um, regarding. Fires, uh, recreational fires or open fires that are not, uh, that are wood fires that are outdoors. And I guess. Captain Brooks or, or Mr. Matt Leany. Chief Brooke is going to explain these. And is it just for feedback? And we're not here at this point, um. Cause it hasn't been reviewed yet, right? By.
It's currently under review by.
Currently under, yeah. So this is just a draft to look at. If there's anything we see, we want to flag for attention, uh, to the final version.
Yeah.
It should be just right inside, um, um, page six, on page six, that's right. There, there we are. Yeah, yeah. Um. There's, uh, the main issue, the main, um, change here is in three oh seven, four point four point two. Uh, recreational fires. Um. I think that how this works, and maybe Haley or Captain Brooks is back, explain the, um. How it, how the, how the existing language is identified and the new language is identified. I take it that. We're talking about one at four A now, uh, Craig.
Yes, so you're talking about the.
Yeah, how that. Yeah, how the, how the new language is distinguished from the old language. I think there's a. Like it's a new section, uh, four oh, three oh seven, four point two. There's, uh, a line recreational fire shall be prohibited. An exception. Is this all new?
This is not new to me. It might not be verbatim, um, but this is mainly with the, uh. You know, having a hose out, uh, no openings, no larger than a quarter inch. Um, yeah, and dry wood. Yeah, this looks pretty much the same.
Well, I need, uh, questions or comments from.
Yeah, my question is, um. If this passes, do, do you have a method to communicate these changes? To, um. Vacation, to vacation. Um.
I don't believe we have that function quite yet. I think.
Doing some research, uh, about communicating, um, uh, evacuation, um, information. And there are all, I can only find three rental agencies in town. So it wouldn't be a, it's. It, it would not be difficult for you to, you know, to drive by and meet with those and give them those changes if they, if they do occur, if, if, if the board approves them.
Usually that's what happens. We get a call, um, usually the fire department or we get, um, from the. ECC from dispatch and then we'll go out and we'll educate. That's pretty much what we do. Um, we educate them, hey, this is what you need to do. A lot of the times, um, you know, we save work with food, that kind of things. Um, if we can see it, then we can take care of it. But a lot of times people just don't know. So.
Right.
It's mainly education. We don't have a function to.
Suggesting is that you affirmatively or take, take. Drive by the rental agencies and there, there are only three of them, Green, Cambria Vacation Rentals and Mason's. The, the Cambria Vacation Rental Offices and drop by the new requirements and say, please. Have your owners comply with this and, and, and to, and to have them affirmatively. Uh, communicate that to the owners so they know in advance.
Yeah.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and you can, you know, it can go into the welcome packets for all rentals.
I was thinking, the people actually using the rentals also should know.
Yes, exactly.
You know, so they don't like tip the lid off or whatever.
Yeah. And there's others that can, not to take your time to this, but. Fire Safety Council can help you with this, CERT can help you with this, Red Cross can help you with this, if it's just going to those three agencies with the stacks and getting all yours. Your welcome letters.
Um, almost a hundred percent of the ones I've been on are, um, community members as well. So getting that name out, getting that out to the community members for being.
Uh, any questions on the actual language, uh, for provision to this?
I think the big question was the screen requirement was left out of the old one. Yeah. They didn't have the screen.
Owen did not have, Owen was not that.
Put it in. No, that's a new section. Oh, is it already in there? Um. The code's three point, three oh seven.
That's in there now. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's good.
Pretty big.
Yeah, dude.
Well, do they?
Can we restrict that to like an eighth inch or something?
I don't, I'm not sure. I, I think that's the basic, like what, what manufacturers give out. I'd have to look at this. I don't.
They're all about, I've never seen one that's more, that's, that's eighth inch. You almost don't see through it.
No.
Right.
It's a use of the line.
The, the. For, for, for Vins in your house, the minimum was eight to an inch.
Oh, yeah, the Vins.
And, and they want, and now, um, for Vins, they want you to have a sixteenth of an inch.
Yeah.
Uh, or smaller mesh. That's what I put on my house. But so on these things, maybe I don't know how, or how effective quarter inch or, or less is, I don't know whether it makes a big difference.
Yeah, and I believe because we don't have, we are more strict than the county, um, because there are burn days in, in Cambridge in the outskirts. So I think we could change whatever we wanted to as well, make it stricter from the fire code. So.
I think the intent was to have a commercially available one that.
Yeah.
Their standard, I'm like, yeah. Or.
Yeah, I, I see.
Where that came from. It should be smaller. I don't disagree with that, but.
Yeah. And, and we don't necessarily have a function to, we're not police, we're not cops. We don't have a function to cite these people. We do for defensible space and stuff that has come out recently, but, but we don't necessarily have a function for that other than calling, you know, A P C D or Cal Fire N.
Uh, if it isn't our municipal code, um, our administrative citation program, I think actually would allow you to cite them.
Really? Okay.
What is, what is the enforcement function? There's, if there is, I, I didn't think about that.
I know it's reading those. Um, we can cite, uh, have citations, uh, and then there's a, there's a scale. I mean, if there's a repeat citation, we can find, they can be fined. Um.
City, the sheriff department.
No, no, uh. He's step, including firefighters, yeah. I can do it.
Firefighters can issue a citation.
Yeah, yeah. Where we had that rule was, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of misquotes actually that, um. Are covered, will be covered by that. Uh, I was mentioning the dogs, you know, leash law, leash rule on, on the ranch. Uh, and, and David Gary was mentioning in the last meeting that they're gonna, they're gonna start trying to do that.
Yeah, it's amazing.
That's not a fun job.
It's not fun.
No, wait.
Facilities and resources, it's not fun for the fire department.
I called the fire department on our, on, uh, an Airbnb at our next door neighbor. That looked like it was burning down the neighborhood with, with an open fire. And by the time, of course, you guys came with lights and sirens. And by the time, of course, you guys came with lights and sirens, and by the time you got to the front door, it was put out.
Yeah.
So there was nothing to it, of course.
I, I, I think.
But it, but it, but, but it did put the fear into them, and it never happened again.
Well, that's, that's, that's scary, I'm saying, point. I was thinking, I, one thing I thought of, uh, getting back to the spark, the spark arrestor. Um. Maybe a properly functioning spark, you know, something, something in there to, to, to make, make it clear that you don't want to just have a rusted out spark arrestor with holes in it. Cause they rust out. This, in this environment, um, they don't last that long. Uh, and uh, then they get big gaps. So I don't know. A spark arrestor in, in good condition or something, maybe might.
Yeah.
Might be a good to add there.
Functional.
Functional, yeah.
Um.
A lot of times they're just sorry.
Yeah.
Right, melted.
Yeah. I had one of many, you know, sometimes they're left out. Few years and. It was basically gone, it was just rusted. I don't know, stainless steel or not that, nothing fancy.
Like the last center, I don't recall that being in there about the hose. That's very good.
Yeah, that is good too.
Holes. But that's, you don't think about it, there's always the holes, but is it connected, you know? The time you get there, you're in trouble.
Yeah.
So that was a good condition if there was.
Yeah, yeah, I think everything is.
Yeah, it looks really good.
I think that all, this found, it seemed fine to me, I mean, it's, it's, you know, maybe the tightening that.
Yeah, cause that.
Tightening the screen length a little bit.
Looking at this, not only does this need to go to those who are renting Airbnbs, it needs to go to the owners of Airbnb, B and Bs, so that they can get that hose.
Yeah.
Out there, so.
Yeah.
It's not, not a big reach, but we just figure out the best way to get the information to the.
Yeah. Um. You know, if there are questions or comments from the board, I'll um invite public comment. Anybody? On mine or? In-house, okay, we'll move on. This is a, again, it was an informational item, we, we don't have a um. Uh, role here in the. This will be an actual recommendation. Uh, presumably it'll. Get back to us after council has reviewed it. And we'll get a chance with that in January. And um, moving on. To uh. This is somewhere David was going to do a presentation, it's item four B. Uh. The um. Production, uh, this committee won't actually see it cause it's on the December and Jan.
Oh.
Okay, then it gets used for a thirty day adoption window, and then it's. Placed in the code in January. Okay, so are we, are we, are you all of us comfortable with uh? Those changing, those suggestions we made being adequate?
Basically adding.
To go forward to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Adding where functional there.
Yeah. Functional and, and, you know, we'll take the notes and then.
Take the notes and, and I'm gonna go.
Along with, cause to, uh, Mr. Carmel is helping finalize.
Yeah.
That big language, and so I'm bringing forward those suggestions ahead.
Do we need a motion to do that, or just um hit go with it?
Just repeat what your notes were, because I was not taking notes.
Okay, uh, I think we, by consensus, we um.
It's always some informational items, so it does not need a motion.
But, but just, just good, I mean, I think with.
But I don't wanna go back and look into recordings to get.
Yeah, I think we, I think, if I'm wrong, but we um, on, on a description of the uh, uh. Non-combustible spark arrestor. Uh, we wanted to, I don't know if we're um. Wanted to make, to make it down to one eighth inch, but. I think we're, we're backed off from that, because we'd have to make sure that it's something commercially available.
Uh, we could say one eighth, one quarter inch or smaller, but I have no larger than one eighth.
And no, I may be sticking with that, and that's just, yeah.
And then just add, add somewhere in that, you want to phrase that, add function.
Functional, properly functioning, non-combustible spark arrestor, something like that. I think that was it.
Yep.
Safe case.
Yeah, cause everything else, uh, everything else I think is fine. Uh. As it is, it's good, it's good, uh, we're happy with it. Uh, so to move on to new item four B, um, this is going to be, was going to be Dave, David's uh presentation. Uh. I don't know um. If anything that's Mr. McLehand even can fill in with. Uh. Cause there was a, we were in, he, I know. Most of us were in on that, on the email exchange. Uh, yeah, I don't really have anything else to add on the environmental sensors. I haven't done a ton of research. Uh, I know David is sick, but he's kind of one that's been, been searching this. From, I know that chief has looked at it, and then again, chief is. Obviously, um, out of the country.
Hmm.
Um, I think from staff level perspective right now, while these are nice. Hmm. Just can't afford it, but you need to look at that funding mechanism, like, like.
Right.
Turn this off right now. Yeah, and that, that, that would be my um, ends my intuition here too, that it's, it's a new, it's, it's a. I don't know if it's used that widely, it's experimental, Santa Clara County, obviously there was a Santa Clara. County um installation that they're talking about. I, any comments on that? Any comments on whether we want to pursue it ultimately, or, yeah, or?
It seems to me if you're gonna evacuate some places, you need to have sensors tell you what's happening, where you're not. And that's why I was wondering if that's what this is doing. It doesn't explain, based on what I've seen, but it says when. But I didn't know if it did other. Things, that all it does is tell you which way the wind's blowing.
Uh, tells you which, where the smoke is, where the.
It's the early, early, early warning of a, of an up, of a um.
Right, that's why I'm getting a fire.
You know, the fire, the thing is.
And it's, and it's quite sophisticated. Apparently it can distinguish between a campfire and a wildfire.
Okay.
Which begs the question of how you would position it up at the campgrounds.
When, when, when sensor assemblies added to these sort of. Additional cost of. I suppose twenty five.
Yeah. I don't, they also, yeah, it's um.
They're all different.
Oh, they're all the same, there's.
It is just, it is a, a big network of sensors.
Look, I think the question is, does the fire department endorse it and see value, see a huge value add in it?
Right.
Then, if so, then we can look at uh funding mechanisms.
Yeah.
For it, whether it's individuals, whether it's grants. I'd also be very curious what Moro Bay is doing, and is that, is that Cal Fire there, or is that?
They have their own fire department.
More of it, yeah, their own.
In fact, that's Dan McCray, former firefighter, uh, fire captain here. Yeah, they, it was in, it was in New Times and a, and a um. Um. A citizen sent us the uh, the link. In fact, he's somebody who was uh, was thinking of applying for the committee. Um, might still apply for the committee. Uh. He was, saw that and, and, and morbid. I mean, I guess the idea, it was sensors, this, this kind of came up. This topic came up out of the um. Alice's fire specifically in L A. But there was a fire that they thought had been put out. I know this happens, this, this has happened here actually. Uh, that they thought was put out, and then a week or two later, not long afterwards, it flares up. And it flared up obviously without being noticed right away. Hence the disaster, but I think these remote sensors are partially to prevent, you know, to um, get a really early warning.
Hmm.
On a fire before the satellites see it, before the.
Well.
Yeah.
I, I didn't read the article, but why was Cal Fire so against it?
It wasn't an article, it was a, in an email.
It was Greg's.
Email thread, Greg Alex.
Yeah.
I, I talked about, I think. Yeah, look at, I mean, you had.
I mean, they, they have. They have cameras and they have all this sense.
Yeah, they had a sample ready, which might be.
The place.
Which might be why they don't, yeah.
I don't think it was an official Cal Fire position, it was Greg's opinion.
Yeah.
And as informed as it is, but I recall that he thought the money could be used better elsewhere.
Hmm.
For fire mitigation.
It, um, I, I just noticed in my proposals, there were, there were. Very high costs for.
Monitoring.
For maintenance.
Yeah.
Right?
That's what I wondered.
And ongoing costs.
Do I think?
They were pretty substantial. And I don't know what's um. I, I noticed that was going to the Santa Clara Fire County Fire Safety Council. Uh, twenty three thousand dollars for twenty units for a year. Quite a, quite a heavy burden for the community, I would say, looking for that kind of funding. On an ongoing basis.
Hmm.
But I, I like the concept of it. I mean, I certainly would love, love to see the sensors. In the community, my question, first question was, would those sensors be put on public property?
Uh, they can be put anywhere, they're firmly discreet, uh, but as I understand it from our safe focus groups, they can be, they're like a, like a. Beehive box, you can put it anywhere at any height. And it, and looking at the map, it is a combination of public and private. So you wouldn't need permission to. Install and to inspect and to.
Right.
Um, if they were, you know, they're probably right of ways, like county. Uh, road right of ways, then you have the issue of vandalism.
Hmm.
Well, you know, they're too, too close to the darn road, it's easy for people to look at them and say, I don't like those suburbs and that stuff. Bang on them.
And then it.
It basically just look like a weather station, or just a basically a weather station sit there there, but it has a sensor that sends. Information to, this, I mean, they're pretty.
Oh, you would think, you would think nobody would object to it.
Well. I, if you. With permission of the committee, I'd like to contact the uh. Fire department down south and see what system they're using, uh, how they came to it, how wide they deployed it, what the costs are.
Hmm.
Talking about Moro Bay, Moro Bay, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing to do.
Well, Moro Bay has.
Well, let me see, there's one.
They're using something.
They're using something, let me just see if I can find it here real fast. Uh, this was really recent. Cytis. This is a different one, this S Y T I S. Uh, James Kelty was the one in the Senate. Um.
Can you forward that to me?
Okay, I'll try to forward, I'll forward it to you after offline, yeah. It was um. On into New Times, uh, and it was just to look at the article quickly here. Um. Yeah. Hang on a second here. I, I'm not wrong, I think, I can't, I'm not using Microsoft Edge here, so. Um, I will say, I will, I would.
You okay with me inquiring about it?
Yeah. It's fine, yes.
If it looks into quantity necessary for our science community.
Yeah.
I notice they put a little blue box on the map here, that's like twenty fives.
But.
But along with eighty five.
Yeah. And the one, one thing about, about fires here, of course, is that um. If you just limit it to the. To the, you know, urban reserve line. Uh, that, that's covered, that's, you know, where, where Cambria Fire is the primary fire department, you're missing a lot of.
Yeah.
Fire, you know, very fire prone and a lot of fuel out there right around the edges that were working very hard, people working very hard to, you know, clean up. Like Covell Ranch and the other areas that were fired and start, so uh. In some ways, it's like, you're gonna do sensors, you might as well, and this is where Cal Fire comes in, cause it's their territory. But uh, you'd have to kind of have a um. Much wider network, spend more money, if you're gonna cover the area.
Do we know? The area one of these sensors. Probably. So as I say, what's the distance?
The footprint in which?
No, 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 I'm talking about how.
Um, to go out, how, what's the area that, that the sensor will sense?
I, I don't.
That's a David Pearson question.
That's what I was wondering, cause it took a lot of hair to look like to cover it, as men. They got a bunch on there.
Yeah.
Whereas they can.
Whole bunch of them.
But, you know, I think maybe in the. You draw a circle around the community. You know, and you've got the sensors and the sensors all overlooked.
Well, I understand that, it was, it was specifics to.
A change out near you. The house, then you've got a hundred percent coverage. So the question is, do you need twenty sensors for Cambria? If they're high enough, you know, and they're, and the strength of the sensor is sufficient that it.
I suppose you would kind of know.
Yeah.
So.
So it sounds like we're, right now, the, uh, bit of consensus here that. We know now the cost is prohibited. At the present time. Oh, yeah, and that would be that, you know, we, we want to look at, I want to look into it later, but right now, it's something we, we endorse.
Well, yes, well, yes, but I think the first question has to be, is this? All things being equal, is this uh important value add for the community?
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
The answer is yes, then we can. Look at the hurdles to achieve.
Well, yeah, it's good, that's good for it. And we need a fire department, obviously, to. Way, you know, you can take a, take a, a close look at it and come back with an opinion that's.
And we could also look at End of Eye having come do a presentation at the committee level. We can look at stylists, hopefully, and say that, like, they can come and do, you know, something very similar.
Um, and we could have the fire chief from Moro Bay.
Um, even chime in in terms of, uh, you know, for the next six months, as they're going through their pilot with that, you know? Some of the advantages of, of his, the system they're using. Pitfalls, you know, stuff like that. You know, some of the things I, I think about with these systems is I, I envision them having to be propped up in a high area, so they have a huge swath.
Yeah.
Cause they're basically looking at infrared, you know, um, is my understanding, so. I think we just need some more information on all, all the various different products and then.
Uh, it's not infrared, it's, it's actually smelling the gas.
The N five?
Yes.
Hmm, but I think, is it stylus? Uh, the other one, the stylus, the one that, 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 uh, James Kelty was talking about.
Yeah.
That's infrared, yeah.
Isn't that one, like?
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't, I don't, pardon me.
Whatever.
Well, we'll get some presentations.
What I'll do is, I'll um. I'll pull up the um New Times article, I'll send it around, send link around all of you. And um. As far as the kind of email conversation with Greg Alex, I mean, I might, I might. Kind of retrieve it, maybe. It's up to you, cause that's a, this email, that's not like a public.
Okay.
Statement, but uh.
Yeah.
The, the question is, he was um. He has reservations about it, I know that, so.
Sure.
So, our uh. Our consensus here, we're not taking action, obviously, I think it sounded like we want, we do want to learn more, to get the um vendors. Uh, for, you know, ideally to do presentations. This committee, uh, especially.
A lot of information.
Next year, in the new year, yeah, and so we can find out, what, we can ask the questions and find out if it would make sense here. That seems like good. We would adjust the consensus.
Right.
Uh.
Uh, last item, actually, again, I guess, I think it's gonna do. Yeah, Captain Brooks, so I don't know, um, I did have some um, thoughts on this one, related to. Uh, our budget. Um, I mean, I raised it, but not that it's a, you know, a burden, uh, necessarily, but they're.
Oh, we've got facility upgrades?
Well, you're moving to facility upgrades, yeah. Um, and I I had one, where is the ferry, yeah? Had one, um, particularly, in the second attachment, I thought it was particularly interesting. About the specific needs. Where does it start? It starts on page um, twenty one. The upgrade needs list, uh, modernization and and. They do, it's a much more specific, uh, focused list of uh, items than that other one, I think we, uh. The general, kind of the, the first attachment that seems to get, uh, we, I think we've seen something like it before, sort of a. Broad view of just what, what it costs to replace a station, essentially, kind of thirty thousand foot thing. This is more granular. Attachment two, and I was looking over these, there's like, uh, went to quite a few items, I mean, there's thirteen. Thirteen items, uh, of various improvements, uh, but I said, I was during the, before the meeting of the board last week. I was looking at the um, capital improvement program list for the fire department. And which has its own list of capital projects, because these are capital projects, um, various upgrades and so forth. I wondered if we're, what we really should be doing here is trying to um. Get the two on the same, you know, get this list, whatever's in this list that's really priority, getting it on the. Capital improvement list, and look at the capital improvement list and see if some of those items are not really what we're asking for at this point. So I don't know, I mean, we're gonna have Chief, you know, Chief Frick, he was gonna be here, uh, we were thinking, he'd be here, he's on vacation. Um, Captain Brooks is on a call, they're all on the call, so.
There's many comments on that.
I can step in.
Yeah.
Um, so, so typically, the C I P was that they um, have for the fire department. Focus on apparatus, um, some other equipment, uh, most recently, uh, there was the talk of. Station upgrades as far as kitchens.
Yeah, some of that stuff is in, I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, and so, um, with some of that fundraising, we've addressed some of those issues, uh, from that, the Hertz Ranch and.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, try to save Ruth and and everybody that that made their possible, you know, and then I think the chief was looking. Here, with the station specifically, evidently real long range planning. For the fire department quite a while, I mean, that's why we're, you know, pulling money out of reserves that we really don't have, but we have to get this engine ordered, and that's why we're applying for grants. So I think the chief has really been starting to, like, how are we gonna look in a long range for financial planning mode, um, for. The fire department, but that's his job, right? The fire department, long range fiscal plan.
Yeah.
And that that station will eventually need lots of work, so I think once he took a look at the station as a whole, then he got very granular about what goes into the station. So SCBA rooms, the plyo vents for all the evac systems for their engines when they pull in, so as the engines back in, they're idling. Exhaust has gone out, carcinogens, so those um, systems in which. They put the plyo vents on the uh, the tailpipes, there's actually new systems now that kick on, um, as you come in, you don't have to put the. These plyo vents on the tip pipes. Um, there's a gym that's in the apparatus bay, that's also in the same area in which those engines back in are all carcinogens. So when we look at the station as a whole, um, these are all the things that go into the station, that that would go into a station remodel. Yeah, um, so I think we can, at some point, we start looking at updating the C I P list, we can start parsing out some of these requests that are the highest priority. And put them in the C I P list. I mean, if we're gonna be honest, the district is not going to have six point two to ten point five million. To to do all these things and upgrade the station.
Yeah.
I think the bones to station are good. I think there's things that we're working on now through some of those fundraising efforts that will buy us quite a bit of time. And then we'll start at the long range plan for these things. A lot of these things. Probably won't be able to do, to be done unless we start looking at that parcel tax in the next year or so.
Yeah, I I just think it it's just prioritizing this stuff, um, the the new, you know, the sub-attachment too, uh. And making sort of in in sync with what what the C I P suggestion might be a good step, because. I mean, this first, the apparatus bay exhaust and ventilation system, I think we've talked about that, like the health and safety factor there, um. If that was, if if it's really important to do that, good to know what it costs, but also, it's kind of, it's kind of folded into um. A third, you know, priority three item here, it looks like, under uh, metal building, um, on that handout that we got. Which has a kind of a broad, um, yeah, a broad uh, number. Estimate of two twenty, two hundred twenty thousand, we don't know if this, if this, if this is specific thing might cost. A lot, you know, quite less, apparatus bay exhaust and ventilation system. It'd be good to, you know, maybe break these things down, break them out, well, separate, uh, separate items and get a good cost estimate, and maybe have a. Maybe a longer C I P list, but a little more detailed, a little more prioritized.
Yeah.
That's my, my, my thought.
Yeah, and I think that when the chief gets back, I mean, yeah, you take a long dive look or a long look at this. Because these are long range C I P goals, you know, and so if, um, and I think that what he wants to do is start putting these things on our radar, so I think we want to be integrated into the C I P.
Yeah.
So we'll probably have, you know, we'll break out this fire station improvements piece and start getting a little more detailed.
Yeah.
And and we'll have to actually start.
Yeah, I mean, some things are not related, I mean, some things, the 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 higher priority items tend to be. Uh, well, there's a roof, the roof uh, replacement, but most of them, you say, are are not directly fire, the fire station itself, you know. Replace the rescue boat, and place the water tender, which is really expensive, of course, but water tender. Uh, the fuel tank is outside too, so, but then a lot of the stuff down below and uh, fire sta, well, fire station improvements cover quite a bit and and they're. Yes, they're all priority three, but, you know, some of them might be more higher priority than others, so.
Yeah, and those those priorities are gonna change, because I think the engine was priority one for a really long time, and now that that's. You know, uh, underway, some of these other priorities will shut, yes, we started checking off.
Like water tenders can actually make them.
Yeah, because. You go out there.
Costs our firefighters to go, but still they're bringing in.
Yeah, yeah, we just had to have the money for the capital outlet to buy them. Uh, any, any comments on this? I I didn't want to monopolize things, I just have this, as explaining this handout, basically.
That might, that might be looking at. Building in the same location or a new location in town, you, you.
Yeah, I don't even think we've gotten that far, but I would imagine it's gonna be same location.
Okay.
But that that parcel is rather large, and there's a whole another section to the left side.
There's, you know.
Talks about a two-story, you know, going.
Yes, the chief.
I don't know, we can put a two-story in the same place, maybe put another one in the bath or something to make it, except, I don't know, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would, an idea would be in the same, same spot. You know, obviously, financially, it's a special district with our revenue stream, these asks are.
Yeah, would it, would it be uh, possible, I mean, is there all. Things that most people, I don't know if people in town really know what's required for a firehouse. Would it be out of the question to say, I mean, I I think you've done it, like an open house and say, this is what we have. This is what we need, this is why we're doing what we're doing, and show the people in town that, like, this stuff's, I mean. So the building's twenty nine years old, my house is forty years old, it's a building that's still good, why we need to, you know what I mean? People just have that process, the the engine's twenty years old, well, my car's twenty years old, it's still running, you know what I mean?
No, I think it's.
Open house and just say, you know, here's what we got, but here's what we're going for to make sure that everyone's safe and.
But I think that would be a part of the engineering study and then eventual the parcel tax. There, there will be a component of that in which there is, we'll call it PR campaigns, in which they would more than likely do that open house. Um, town hall type thing at the fire station to answer those types of questions and to go overall. All exactly what the requirements are of a firehouse and why it's dangerous to have exhaust in the sound area, which are, they're doing cardio on the treadmill.
Right, and the the general idea, people don't realize that they have to change out turnouts because they get corroded, they're bad, and. They don't have, you know, they have to change out the O two cylinders every five to seven years, and that, and these are all. Just safety factors and mandated, and so they don't understand, like, they just show up with all this equipment and they're like, oh, they're good.
Yeah.
People just don't, the general public doesn't understand how complicated a firehouse is.
Yeah.
When you're, when, you know, all the stuff you have, do you, communication center? You just need a radio, right? No, telephone, no. It's a lot more than that, and, I mean, I've, I've seen this station a few times, and it's, you know. It's better than what I had at the castle, but still, it's, it it does need stuff that it needs to be. Uh, but I guess I'm, I'm just trying to say, uh, it's difficult for people to understand. Why they need to spend the money on something like this when it's already functioning and it's working and. They always show up and they always save the people that make all the medicals and all that stuff. I don't know, it's just. My chief stands for it.
Daniel Thomas, yeah, Gordon.
Well, that's sort of getting into your tax and the parcels. Probably gonna get that through if they don't know what the taxes gonna be allowed to support the fire department. Didn't know what part of that is.
That's what they're talking about.
There's kind of good things here, yeah, there's.
Right, so an operational.
Go together.
Operational foxes and are part of, you know, part of, and this is capital.
Oh, yeah, so both.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think one thing that's gonna come up, uh, that came up with. Help district, help their district, is do you do, you do a renovation, a major renovation, or you just replace the thing? And and I think, given that it's, well, it is not, that it's not, is it big enough? With renovation, upper renovation to, or maybe small, well, you can add on to it a little bit, you can do an add-on, so you have room to add on, but. The cost of, the cost of replacement is much more, especially if you are buying, you know, building a bigger station. And that would be an issue to bring up, because those are bond issue questions, you either, you have a bond issue, not the partial tax, but your bond issue for either renovation. Or a uh, replacement, that would have to get, you'd have to, you'd have to sell to the public.
I went online and. What I came up with is the cost for a new station is a hundred ninety to two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Instead of four hundred and seven hundred. If you're in Los Angeles, you're close to seven hundred, eight hundred. So it depends, I would think, from the numbers. Somebody took a pretty healthy swap in.
Of course, yeah, construction costs and labor costs are not too different here, really, because it's a public project.
Well, I just.
They're, they're.
Random wage.
It's all for a random wage, it's kind of, it's extensive, uh, and we're not buying land, you know, to look at that issue.
What else? The other part to say, you're gonna purchase a new.
Uh, purchase a new area, new location, I don't think that would be necessary, but again, I don't want to jump ahead too much, I I just was.
Oh, is it something that's gonna be engineered, is that what? Like you're indicating here is studying? Is that?
Are you talking about the parcel tax?
No, no, the, the, the. Station.
No, when I, when I say engineering study, the engineering study is referring to um, what needs to occur um. For a parcel tax annual benefits assessment, yeah, so there has to be a study on what the benefits are gonna be from that tax.
And how to sell it.
Hmm.
And how to sell it.
So this is the staff function, I.
We're talking about another, we're talking about, what, are you talking about the station or are you talking about the tax?
The station, you say it's gonna be a study.
No, I said the study is for the parcel tax and the benefits assessment. This piece right here, in terms of what the chief wants to do long range.
Right.
Uh, for for station enhancements, we'll just go from a staff level, start putting together things to to update the C I P list.
Yeah.
And then.
Okay.
We'll have to look back.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing to upgrade, the station upgrades, what the staff will, the staff will need to do is to put. Dollar amounts on all this, you know, but what'll it cost to do this, and uh, you know, and so we have a very clear idea of what. What would, you know, what would be needed in way of money for upgrades.
Right.
And which would make.
Prioritization, you know.
Prioritization stuff, so if if those are, if that's a manageable amount of money, over time, then the idea of totally replacing the station doesn't become as. Valid, you know, as attractive, I guess, is.
Think you could sell it a lot better.
Right. Yeah, um.
If you did go to a two-story, you wouldn't have to worry about a roof, because you, you can get a new roof.
Yeah.
Then you have a lot more space up above without expanding the base, but you could add on.
Yeah, you might have to expand the footing.
Well, I mean, whatever, it's just what you say, it's. Then it's on, I'll grant it to the foundation. But I said, it's another, you know.
That'd be fun to put a pole in the house.
I was just saying, it'll pull, it'll pull in. Any, any, any other notions or comments?
Um, and public comment. And that lasted everything. Uh, I don't know how to, you know, tie a bow around this one, because it's all kind of. You know, the people doing important, chief wasn't here, but I, my, my sense is that, um, it would be good to return to this. Uh, build the list with some um, budgetary context. Yeah, around it, I think, like, let me all then.
Something that relates to what we're doing already with budgeting for improvements and upgrades.
Yeah, I think, I think what we can do, since this is, from my understanding, the chief thought, put this on the radar as for long range fiscal planning. Like, obviously, we can't do this tomorrow, and I think that's best done through the um, C I P list. So normally, C I P list is going to, uh, kind of a joint thing between R and R, R and I and finance, but I think it'd be good to bring. The C I P list back to this committee, you know, and just keep your eyes on it. It'll take us. I would say January, February-ish, to really refine this, so just, just give us a little bit of breathing room on that, and we'll, or. Start looking at updating the C I P list, and that, that might work. When does C I P list go for um, R and I and finance? March?
Possibly, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we have our new schedule now, so.
So we're, we're, yeah, we're, we meet in January, so we can, uh, then we don't, don't meet till April. April's too late, uh, for the budgeting process, but maybe we'll have special meetings.
We can have a special meeting in, say, in February, if we have to, yeah, that's something we, it'd be good for us to be able to. See this and really sort of, and have everybody here, have chief here.
So what you're suggesting is that the, the fire chief. Break the priorities down into manageable chunks, chunks that could be proposed for each annual budget. Is that what you're saying?
Potentially, potentially, yeah, I think, because the, because the way this, the capital improvement um, program works is that. It's, it's basically say, you know, it's supposed to be years out, two years out, what we identify as things need to be done. In, you know, in the new budget, or somewhat urgently or down the road. And they're all stretched, and and some estimates are proven or presented, so you can get a sense of what we'd have to pay eventually. That's the idea, you know, so you put these, these um, identified needs uh, for, or upgrades. On that list, it it gets, it gets them in the mix, budgets, basically.
Right, you've got to present them so that they can be added to the proposed budget for the next fiscal year.
And then for the future, and then for future, future fiscal years, as, you know, as many come.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so like a immediate need.
Choke it down, right, priority.
Necessary need.
There's like three categories, uh, or two categories, no, there, there's a budget, there's, there's a B, uh, there's actually four categories, there's. In the list, B means, here, if you look at that little, uh. All of, that means it's already in the budget, that money is supposed to be spent this year, this fiscal year, then there is a one. Which doesn't, you you only see that much, is one that is basically a request, is something that. Is considered to be urgent enough to put in the next year's budget, essentially, there is two and three, which are. Um, two is, is is important, needed, three is. You know, we'll finance it, we'll get the money, kind of, you know, it's not, it's not wish list, but it's, it's out there, it's not on the current, current. Radar, that's pretty accurate, right? Yeah, so you want to see what, how, how these things, how these proposed uh, upgrades. Fall into that, into those categories, and then also, obviously, the cost. So. I would say, again, so I guess the outcome of this little discussions that we're, whether we revisit this, hopefully revisit this in a meeting early next year. It could be a special meeting, um, here's the budget schedule, but to come back with. So- something we can see that puts uh, the uh, you know, request for upgrades. In the C I P context, okay, something we can look at.
Definitely, that's good. Guys can do that, you can do anything.
I might suggest that these NFPA requirements regulations might have a little more detail of what they acquired. You know, breathing, you know, was that, you can't just put a fan there and blow air out through the vents. That would be more helpful for people maybe understanding what the codes are, because those are, as I say, strict.
They're very strict, ventilation system has to have a certain capacity.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
So sometimes, you know, what is existing, and why this is important for health and.
Yeah.
Not everything.
Yeah, those, those get complicated too.
Right.
Related item are actually, well, first of all, no public comment in this, we'll move on, uh, actually, the future agenda items, which. Bring up something I haven't, it'd be sort of, sort of relevant to what's, but about. Um, we can spec, if we schedule a meeting, this would be a special, I think. Where we all, so we can all tour, tour the firehouse, because actually, the committee's never been out there. I don't know if I ever been in, I don't, I I've been in the public areas.
Been in the office, right.
I've been in the office and of course the meeting room, and some areas up inside of it, but I don't think we've gotten a full tour of everything. And uh, we all should. Um, that'd be a good, that'd be a good idea, maybe um. Sometime early in the year.
You could do it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it's easy, um. As you know, I, you notice I.
Because it's a public meeting, uh, guests are welcome, it will be popular.
You'll do a lot of people.
Yes, has to do that. The liaisons.
R and I goes to visit, uh, say, the waste water plant, um, and then the the W R F, and that's, those are public meetings, and then. People, some people do tag one, don't they?
Well, chief has spoken about an open house there, but it was more of a festive.
Yeah, and that's usually, I don't think, like. They started to be poking around in the uh, you know, the exercise bays, that sort of stuff. In the sleeping quarters.
Yeah. Oh, it's back.
It's back, you know, we were just talking about.
And for talking about invading your spirits.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we talked about, we talked about the, especially um, the second uh, attachment uh, to. Four C, which was the list of, of uh. I don't know how to title it, it's the, if, um. Modernization and upgrade needs, list, the list of specific upgrades and modernizations. And I think our, we didn't, we didn't take any action or anything like that, it wasn't an action item question, we, we. We um. Want to come, I think what's gonna happen is that, that's gonna come back, the change and and um, matched. Come back uh, next year, or next year, with a um, a version, a version of that list, uh, which. Is uh, uh, basically, um. You met, you know, harmonized with the C I P list for the budget, in other words, but but basically do that, basically, they'll do that list as C I P items. And um, so that we can come back with with price tags and also kind of urgency, urgency.
Urgency classifications to see what this committee would recommend being put into the C I P list and in what categories. I mean, what priorities for the coming budget and for the future budget numbers, kind of, kind of. Um integrate it with their long-term natural planning.
For sure, okay.
That was, that was the gist of what, that was kind of my. That's my idea, but I think we're on board.
Was it wrong, so that's what you need today and.
Yeah, and get it with five. And get as part of the of the of the of the process that we use for, you know, if you know, uh. Research, you know, R and I and anything else, yeah.
Yeah, I did talk to chief about this before, um and yes, agreed with all that stuff. Um I think we wanted, I know this is the second time this has come up, and so I think I wanted to preclude this with like, start off with, we're not complaining at all. Um but there's issues um that we are seeing in the future happen, especially for the C S D and everything. I think when I talked to chief, he was saying, and again, I've heard this, I don't have the data on this. But from the retirees, they said there was like for the engine that we have, I guess there was a um budget where they would save money up. And to the point where we could buy it and it wouldn't be such an issue um with, you know, getting things from reserves. Um so I think chief was looking at, hey, these are the issues that we're having and that we see are gonna happen. Um so if we could start planning now for the future, we're not looking for right now, like, yes, there are issues, and I think um. You know, she's done a good job with with putting those issues down, but that's pretty much what it was.
Okay, and on the issue of, on the first uh, the other, the other attachment, which I think is, we've seen before, some version of this about um. The costs of replacing or um. Renovation versus replacement and the cost of replacing of a new fire engine, uh I think. Question I I raised is, you know, the more you look at these specifics of what needs to be done. In way of of upgrades, uh. You you get a better idea of whether whether um renovation is the best course rather than replacement, just as if you can. If you can do all that work, that upgrade work with the with the existing station, without having to take it away and, you know, that little new one. Then renovation becomes kind of the, obviously, the preferred course. We had to find out, I guess, what what all the. All the upgrades, if they're feasible and what they would cost and so forth. So we didn't really tackle that much, that renovation versus versus replacement in much detail right now, but. Any questions, I guess, you got, you got the captain Brooks here, any questions for him?
It was pretty straightforward, yeah, just.
Yeah, make up a loose, it's.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Good.
Break it down, like you just talked about, you see where each, I think it's important to know which ones you would. Uh prefer over, like which ones are the most important.
Yeah, is what your priority list is.
Is it replacement of the S C B A and the turnout, or is it, is it for the new O two charging station? I mean, all that kind of stuff, which is important, the most important things right up front and then work towards. Goes.
Works towards getting.
Yeah, and then is, I know the station is very important, it needs to be upgraded and it has a lot of. Older functioning stuff, but it still functions, right?
Yeah, so.
You know, so it's like, yeah, yeah, that's what we're talking about earlier, people don't know. The average person, I'm gonna say, doesn't know what's required in a firehouse. They don't know that you have to have all these things in there, you can't function, you show up unseen and you're like, now we got you in a problem. They don't know what you had to do to get to that point, and I think that's what we're talking about.
The outreach to have, having an open house.
House, coming in, having people in and see and say, this is why we need to move forward with them, so. I think we get a better response for, you know, the taxes or whatever we need to do to raise the money. If they know what they're looking at and what they're saying.
And even that, and even before that, we discussed having the committees.
Yeah.
Go there, do a tour, do a tour of the fire station, a little more of a. A full tour, it it would be, because it's all, the whole committee, it would be a public meeting and the public would be. Uh allowed, obviously, to come with us, uh but we were thinking of doing something over next year. Uh setting up for the committee as a tour, obviously, chief, he has to um. You know, side kind of went, that's time to do it, but have us go, you know, us and perhaps the the new member. If we can get seat, seat filled by that time to do an actual tour of the station.
That would be great.
That one been, I haven't been in every, every part of that station either, and in public areas and some of the side areas, not very much. I noticed on your uh needed list of uh upgrades. You still don't have the shades, the window shades in the main in the meeting room.
That's true, we still have that.
There's a, there's a, there's a story there to it, uh, well, I guess fires say, folks, I'm meeting there before, but back in the day when they're meeting there, this. The sun just blurred through there. Yeah, yeah, the screen's wiped out, so, but in the church now, so. That's permanent, right? It's permanent because it's free. I think they are.
We're out of there here.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. Any, any future agenda items?
So I have.
Other than that one.
Question. It was brought up in our last C C S D meeting concerning the committee meetings. My understanding is conclusion is. Going to discuss in the committees about the status for everything once or not. Um, that's a way that very.
I don't know how we. Know if you, how was it, when it was finally decided, I think we adopted the schedule.
No, it didn't.
Uh you provided me with direction to bring forward the final schedule that I presented to you at last week's board meeting in December for. So the twenty twenty six schedule for fire protection will be meeting. January fifteenth at ten AM, April sixteenth at ten AM. August twentieth at ten AM, December seventeenth at ten, you know, with special meetings scheduled as.
Right. The answer to the question, I guess, is that, oh, I mean, I I get you, I can get your input now on it.
Oh, that was my question.
But as as far as action taken by the committee, I think it's gonna, it's in the board's hands, we're not, we're not gonna act on it as a committee, but.
That was a question that Harry Farmer brought up during the meeting. That should have input from the committee members, and that's where it was left. I didn't hear anybody say we're gonna have a definite three. Schedule, is that not correct, your minutes?
Or review them a second?
That's fine, I just.
Didn't get the sense that the we, that the board, since the board was that the staff come back. Uh, okay.
That's what come back, that's what it.
Come back, but with that, there wasn't any.
Because I talked to Harry Farmer afterwards and he brought that up during the meeting. I happened to not be there, because they do this, but they're late, but that's. And well, Chris Heinrichs had comments that were not presented, so there's some, I just thought maybe you might.
No, I let's, let's.
Might want to discuss it, I mean, it's not out of our range.
We have time. Any views on that? Well, the idea is, the rationale for it, first of all, was that um we've. And this has been a case with standing committees for a while, uh the twelve. Meeting requirement or the monthly working requirement um over. Tends to bring the committee to together in a lot of cases. You know, do, I mean, they don't have any um action items or presentations, discussion items that are, that need to be done, and so. The workload of a typical standing, typical standing committee workload. Uh, i- is is more appropriate for quarterly meetings with special meetings as needed. To get items that are, that that require action soon, like budget items and so forth. Yeah, and that's what, that's what the thinking was, and we, we did, we did go over this a little bit a couple of years ago, I think it was. In a bylaw revision, where we um established that the um. Whereas the standing committees had been required to have scheduled monthly meetings, we reduced that to. No more than, no, no fewer than four meetings a year, and it was quarterly meetings. And we did, we made that change at the board level because of the um problem of. I mean, I'm not wanting to bring the committees together when it wasn't really anything to discuss of of importance and urgency, so. That was, that was rationale for doing this, so I don't, you know, um. If you're any issue with that, you should let me know, because we will, we will vote on it in December.
Well, that's what I understand was, which is fine, I just didn't know if you were trying to go about this until we was at the meeting, so. At all, I just want to say that you might want to have some input to within the fire. Committee that, you know, the special meetings required, then.
How much of, if you're gonna do a special meeting, how far in advance would we know about it?
Well, what happens is a practical matter, the special meetings that I kind of pulled board to find out what the, what their time availability is.
Okay.
Uh, that's what we've done in the past, um because when it's not a regular meeting, not, you know, you, we don't expect it to have, have. You know, wide open schedules all the time, so, yeah, I mean, that's the chair's, part of the chair's job is to sort of make sure we can come. Uh, and it, they'd be scheduled a couple of weeks in advance, maybe several weeks in advance, it wouldn't have to be, not emergency meetings, but there. There are certain things, I don't know if we would have many of them. Finance uh kind of needs a special meeting around budget time because their schedule never quite connected with the budget process.
Finance, R and I.
R and I is sometimes serious, the projects as they come through, you know, you'll be stagnant on a project, waiting for engineers and reports.
And then it drops and then it doesn't align well.
I guess my question will be, if we, if we know we're, we're meeting quarterly and I schedule my. My vacations around those, and then all of a sudden, there's a special meeting that I need to be at. What happens to the?
I mean, typically, the chair, and I'll try and speak for you, Tom, but typically, typically, the chair.
No, no.
They're typically coordinates.
And if it's really something that can't, if you schedule really rigid on the special meeting. Uh like it has to be done at a certain time and you're on vacation, I, you know, you can miss meetings, I mean, it's, I mean, it's not.
The chief missed the day, I mean, it was fine.
I mean, it's, you know.
But then I'm like.
We haven't had the habit yet, and uh so I don't think, because we don't have things that um.
You're not dealing with budget adjustments, you're not dealing with huge projects, you know, um. You know, if you wanted to look at specs for the engine, you know.
Or if we are, if we are, for instance, the fire engine, uh the um. It, it was a fast-moving thing, and sometimes the board has to act on something, has to make a decision. And we're not, we can't schedule, we can't schedule a fire department, you know, fire committee meeting in time to get the result in. Or the board meets or before the board agendas prepare, so there's timing issues too, if somebody just precluded a meeting of ours. So we are kind of, we are kind of taking the long-term focus and we're more planning bogus, we have a good. Finance uh, but adjustment, budget adjustments generally opposed to go to finance, but they can't, they can't always go to finance either, can they?
Uh with, under the current schedule, it's difficult. Because when you know you need it and it comes up, um try and get it in front of finance, nothing, that agenda posts. And then the board meeting may be the next week. Then that board meeting's agenda is already posted, but finance hasn't looked at it, so it's compensated as well. And so by doing a quarterly, you can have those, those special meetings that pop up, so committee can get their eyes on it or goes to the board.
So actually, we, we're a little more, improves our flexibility a little bit better, and we're more flexible, we can have special meetings. Uh and the regular meetings are sort of the, you know, they're the benchmark, the points which are already there, but we, it doesn't preclude other meetings. The fact we have four scheduled meetings.
Well, the intent is to have representation by community, that's why these committees, isn't it hard to advise?
Uh, yeah, it's, well, it's, it's, it's for people who are committee members or committee, community members to advise, yes, and so. We don't have to have, you know, large numbers of other people here, if they want to come, they can, obviously. It depends with, with the subject matter, obviously, it's a public interest, yeah. Yeah.
And my only question is if we could move it from ten to two thirty, what's better for me?
Well. We gotta, we, we got, yeah, we have, but that's complicated, because we gotta move it to ten from ten thirty. Uh, which is better for us before lunch and better for, I think, for staff. But, yeah, moving it to two thirty bumps up against somebody else's schedule. And there's a pros committee um. Meeting then now, right?
So, you're seeing, what you're recommending is is moving our meetings to ten o'clock from ten thirty.
They're, they're gonna be ten o'clock, yeah. If, if, if it's all right with all of you.
I have to meet at nine thirty on Thursdays.
Thursdays, yeah.
That's today.
Yeah.
I had one this morning and I went till ten o'clock, normally goes to ten thirty, but that's why I'm having a conflict once a month. And it's a work event, but if it was at one thirty, I ordered in the afternoon, I put them all open, but.
Well.
That's, I just thought I can.
I mean, we can always make some adjustments in the schedule.
Well, that's only three times, like four times a year.
Yeah.
So that's fine, that could work.
Yeah, because he originally made the adjustment for um a day. Uh, because he had, he had a running, he had a regular conflict at ten.
I was just asking, I didn't know that, two thirty was openly.
Three is not open. We'll be a little bad, we'll make a final decision in uh December.
Yeah, you guys can.
We can, we can stick, we can stick ten thirty to. Ten thirty rather than ten.
Ten thirty works better for me, but.
I don't know, staff. Yeah, I mean, we're on your. We just can't put into pros, yeah. That was, yeah. Okay, um. Any other comments? So is it with the future agenda item, I guess that firehouse tour can be um recorded as a future agenda item. So I will set that up.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other future agenda items or um? Items you want to raise?
Well, I'm still always interested in evacuation programs, so how we could continue to participate. Right now, we sort of. Have it moved lunch into the community activity, you know, signage and roads being more wider and. Everest evacuation routes and. I personally have a D four. One of the comments, I guess, when you have a fire station, what is your typical time to respond to a place in Canberra? Typically, you get there in five minutes or?
Yeah, it just depends on where the call is.
How about eighteen hundred Downing Avenue?
I could, I could get back to you, I could get back.
Our station is actually an implication.
But we have all these log.
It was moved from.
Also variables to all, if they're out of training, if they're on another call, so response times, you're next to the highway, you're next to highway into Burton.
I was just checking our response times last shift and we're pretty good.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what, that's what, I haven't had your need obviously, but my question is. We haven't looked at the other opportunities that they were presenting up in the. Uh north about their trial, test, evacuation every year, annual.
Oh, the Marin County?
So we haven't. Felt anything new to help us out to do that. And that's why I'm trying to say, well, they take, take the trees down on the sides, get more room, you're widening up the roads where possible and. Keep cars from double parking, see, we have been up five cars parked on our street now, it narrows it down to one lane right there.
Yeah, that's, that goes beyond evacuation, that's like, that's actually for access.
You gotta get there. So you gotta figure out how to do that, we haven't. And the times I've thought about it, any. Action there, we got a new fire truck, that's good, we haven't done anything to promote our evacuation plan.
Well, this, this is, we'll get to this later, this is actually not about the, the issue of cars. Uh parked cars and narrow streets is, is a meaty one, it's worth attention. It would be irrespective of evacuation. Uh, we might want to.
So I've been working with the N C E C, we've had conversations with C H P about. Uh cars on roadways, we've started to take pictures, so that's underway. I would say that we have been talking quite a bit about evacuation with um our neighborhood liaisons, we're having multiple, multiple meetings. Um about evacuations under our current setting. We're not gonna be able to change our narrow streets, our roads anytime soon, uh but that takes a lot of county coordination. Um it's not in our purview as a C C S D, so. We're doing what we can with the powers that we have at the moment, while also working with the county um when it comes to roads, signage and things like that.
And there was an evacuation draft in the works, which told. It's specific to the neighborhoods with a lot of general information.
Responsibility of the C H P, not the county sheriff.
But, yes.
Is that correct?
Yep, except unless, of course, they deem it a private road and the private road doesn't do the same, doesn't have the same. Restrictions as a public road, so that's where I run into my problem is. Where I live, they supposedly have made the two, three roads.